Call this meeting of Lima City Council. The order will begin tonight's meeting with the indication by Counselor Adams, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we come tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that may affect the residents and citizens of the city of Lima, and continue to remind us that all we do here tonight, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nieper.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President, I move to add Mr. Tom Major and Ms. Veronica McLaurin to reports of officials to report on fair housing.
Second.
The motion on the second is to amend tonight's agenda to include Tom Major and Veronica McLaurin to address fair housing. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening. Privilege of the floor, Adrian Ziegler regarding ordinance regarding projectiles fired in the city. You state your name and address for the record, and our rules allow for three minutes.
Adrian Ziegler, 126 South Perry Street, Lima, Ohio, 45804. My question is, I was reading ordinances considering what I believe to be regarding airsoft guns within the city of Lima, and it says that it is strictly forbidden to be fired within the city limits, and I would like that to be changed because I believe the law to be somewhat outdated. The law says air guns and air rifles, which I believe are talking about the traditional BB and pellet rifles which are used for hunting small games such as rabbits and birds and squirrels, and fire metallic projectiles such as BBs that are shaped like spheres, and also hollow point pellets that expand on impact. Airsoft guns, however, which I am trying to get legalized to at least be used in the city, fire small plastic balls in sport-like games where you just try to eliminate opponents while building teamwork and having fun. They are, according to both federal and Ohio law, they are not considered as firearms, they're considered as toys, and according to Ohio law, it's also required to have a blaze orange tip on the front of the guns, no bigger than, or no smaller than six millimeters wide, to depict the difference between them and an actual firearm, to change, or to show the difference between in case, like, police interruptions and such as. And my final thing is, if not to exempt airsoft guns totally, at least to allow the operation of firing of, within the respective boundaries of one's property line. For example, I just would like to be able to fire these in my backyard at a few soda cans or something, and that's all I have.
Okay. Under privilege of the floor, we don't debate, but I want to let you know that under miscellaneous business, the issue will be referred to a committee, likely the Safety Services Committee, and there will be a further discussion on your request, okay? And... Do you have his...
I don't have his...
Okay. We'll get your contact information and let you know when that committee meeting is so that you can also be present and follow this through, okay?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Under the consent calendar...
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item A and the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the auditor requesting legislation to enter to an agreement with the Adman Act.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for demolition.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
Pardon?
Communication number three.
Excuse me? Three? Thank you.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments for property maintenance.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to dispose of two vehicles.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number five be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Community Development regarding Lima News article.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second. The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Tevin.
You know, I looked this communication over, and I have a copy of the Lima News article, and Mr. Glenn, I fully support your efforts to help members in our community, and I think that's what you really are intending to do here. But this program that is available in the city, if this newspaper article is accurate in what you said, it doesn't reconcile with the reality I've experienced with properties that have been fixed, and I think it's, I look at the note or the letter that Mrs. Odom sent to us, and these repairs on this property that were previously done to this home through the program were between 19 and 28 years old. I don't think that it's reasonable to expect any repair to last that length of time, and the city doesn't, through this program, put out such a guarantee. So, like I say, I applaud your efforts, but I just, if this report is accurate that was in the Lima News, would urge caution in making those kind of comments about a very valuable city program.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
First of all, I'm gonna make some comments here, it'll take a few minutes to make, clear some things out. First of all, when Miss Spalding came here, as already was said, city council couldn't do anything about it, so I didn't like the way it tried to be twisted around, what we was, what I said, we make the, the problem came about, a lot of folks in the community, which we got, Ms. Clark's sitting back there right now, and Mr. Tevin, we know her by her house, her pictures, where the city spent all that money, and she's still having the problems. Now, me and you both went over to her home, she here to say, and I'm not gonna allow her to come up and speak, but she had a lot of problems. When I made that point about, we get these bidders, and they continue to do it, she had Amy at her house, she had you at her house, she had Jessie at her house, and these problems still occur right now as we speak today. That's what I'm talking about. We couldn't do nothing about Miss Spalding's house. Miss Spalding's house, the community's helping her out, so I didn't want this to be twisted around. When I made that opinion, and poor Mr., what's his name? But he was in the neighborhood association, but he had a problem with his home too, and he came here every, every city council, that's way before Ms., that's way before she came as a, taking over economic development. We had people with problems with homes, and Ms. Clark would tell you right now, her home's still leaking water, still got the water leaks, still had the damage, they did not do a good job at all. That's what I'm talking about. And when I say taxpayers' money, I'm dealing with taxpayer's money, and she cried out to us. She came to all of us trying to get help, even Amy went over there and tried, and said they couldn't do anything about it, but when I seen the newspaper say, yeah, you're warranted, she came to you three months after the guy, four months after the guy did the work, and still the problem's still there, and the pictures will prove it, to show you the problem's still there, still exists, and we tell her that we can't do anything about it, as we go through them houses and do it. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, if they're gonna do the job right, do it right. But I don't want this to be saying, and twisted around when we say in her house, we knew we couldn't do nothing with Miss Spalding's house, now, but good citizens in the community can help this person out, but I'm talking about, when I said we had problems in the past, we had problems, Mr. Flint, that's his name, he passed and gone right now, he had problems with his home, he came to city council here and talked about it, and we didn't do anything about it, we didn't, we didn't look at the construction company, we didn't talk to them, I don't know, do we need to do that, you know? But she shouldn't have to live like that. She shouldn't have to do that, and she's sat back there now with the house, need to be fixed, and didn't do it. Water coming in the basement, all right, and she went, and she can tell you, I don't have to tell you, sat back, she can tell you, but the pictures will prove it. That's what I'm talking about. Make these contractors responsible. Why come out trying to charge city councilmen, trying to do a good deed in the community, but when you see something like this, this is what you need to go after. Let's spend energy on Derrick Glenn. I'll be all right, I'm a big boy. Spend energy on that guy who did a bad job and took our money. That's what I want to look at and get him. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Nixon.
Mr. Elstro.
It's admirable for individuals and organizations to come together to help Miss Spalding with her housing needs, and I have no doubt that Miss Spalding would be appreciative of those efforts. I hope that those offering assistance do so out of a sense of generosity and compassion for this 85-year-old in need, and not out of the interest, or out of the interest that they might have in the neighborhood stabilization, and not based on ill-informed, ill-formed opinions, based on comments or specious arguments by Mr. Glenn that somehow city or its contractors were delinquent in its duties. I retrieved from the archives the last permit issued for this property that you have before you. It was in May of 1985, issued to Superior Roofing. Twenty-eight years ago, Superior Roofing was a well-regarded and competent contractor. The life of an asphalt shingled roof in 1985, Mr. Glenn, was expected to be about 15 years at best. The public suggestion that the city is not concerned about the quality of work commissioned through its contractor is at least unfortunate, and it is wrong. Our staff takes great care in composing specifications, respecting bidding and purchasing requirements, and inspection of contractors' work. In fact, this city administrates millions of dollars of construction through contractors each year, and we are proud of the results. To suggest projects are summarily awarded without care of quality of work is misleading and false. Thank you.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there anybody else that wants to speak under discussion? Mr. Glenn?
Mr. Howard, only thing I'm asking, how are we gonna fix this problem? Could you tell Ms. Clark how you're gonna fix her problem? This was got done last year. That's what you need to do, 'cause that's a lot of energy for that right there. We can't do nothing about that. We talk about a problem, we occur, that administration knew about. That's all I'm talking about, about, you know, put the energy on that. Don't put the energy on something we can't do nothing about. That's all I'm asking. Let's fix it. Let's don't sit here and argue about it. Let's fix the problem so we can, so we won't go down this road again. That's what we gotta look at. Fix the problem. How we gonna fix that problem?
Mr. Elstro.
Again, Mr. Glenn, there's a role for government, and I think in the first communication we received from Ms. Odom, she is saying the city's hands are tied. They could do so much, and any further with those programs would be inappropriate with the city funds. Again, my comments, I prefaced them with, I think you're leading the private sector to help Mrs. Spalding is admirable, and that is, I think, the course this needs to take. But what I object to is any kind of characterization that the city and its administrators are somehow delinquent in our duties when we contract work. We do care about who these contracts go to. We are regulated by law of how those bids are let. We do specification writing in advance to make sure we get the best product as possible, and again, in this particular case, the roof is 28 years old.
You're talking about the roof?
So, there is no way that...
Talking about this right here.
That one can come back and say, you know, it's kind of like buying a car with bad tires and then saying, you know, eight, 10 years later, the tires are bad. You know, it's unfortunate, Miss Spalding needs assistance, we don't deny that.
No, I get that.
So, I hope you're successful with your private...
No, not...
Mr. President.
I'm not talking about this...
Hold on.
Okay.
Mr. Glenn, are you done?
No, I'm not done. First of all, again, Mr. President, first of all, again, Howard, just take the course. We talking about 1339 Am Street, when Ms. Clark back there, we talking about that, that quality of work.
Hold on, Mr. Glenn.
We...
Just hold on a second.
Let me finish talking.
The letter before us, the communication in front of us is dealing with Miss Spalding's house, okay?
Right. And I explained to you...
And what you're bringing into this discussion is a different house. Am I correct?
No, you twisting the whole story around. No, I'm not bringing it up.
What house are you talking about?
The thing about, the question is, you understand, Mr. President, what was said in this article, 'cause I said what the, what the, a construction workers cannot do, they don't do a good job, okay? We already knew Miss Spalding's house, I said it a million times. We knew she, her house couldn't get worked on. She came here, we said it, we're gonna get done. It's not gonna get done. I brought up, due to city's dysfunction on a lot of different houses, Ms. Clark had a problem, I brought about, I'm bringing up, just want to bring it up, that we have a problem with contractor work in the past. I'm not gonna eat my words, we do. This is one of the problems in the past we having.
It's a different problem, Mr. Glenn.
That's what I'm trying to tell you now.
Different problem than this, correct?
You better believe it. I'm telling him now, I didn't, we could talk till we get blue in the face. We understand, we not gonna, the city's not gonna do nothing with Miss Spalding's house. We are blessed that we got some folks out there trying to work using their hometown pride, trying to do something about it. I'm not worried about that, but I'm saying, fix this problem, and we won't have these problems. We'll be up here talking about this now. She's sitting in a bad home. Now, let's talk about that, and I mean, we're not gonna talk about it, and I come, y'all will say, this not, this not what we talking about. We talking about Miss Spalding's house. I'm telling you over and over and over, Miss Spalding's house ain't got nothing to do with this. Nothing at all. Okay? So, let's stop it, let's fix this problem, 'cause we put our heads together and fix this problem, so we won't have this problem, but nobody want to talk about that, because they want to tie this up with Miss Spalding, over, oh, that got nothing to do with Miss Spalding, this got something to do with this problem. Now, could anybody use their minds and get this done? If they use their experience and figure out how this construction company went through all three of us and still getting away with this? Now, if it was your home, you won't be sitting here, everybody won't be sitting here saying, what are you talking about? No, she had to live like that. When the city had funding and paid for this, she shouldn't have to live like that. That's what we talking about. That's where my appreciation was made, that we have bad contractors, because this is what our experience, and I seen it more than one time, okay? So, let's talk about that. We can't talk about that because we want to tie the whole story around and keep bringing Miss Spalding up. We shouldn't. We should try to fix the problem, instead of trying to tie loops, let's fix this problem here, this problem here, and you want to go out there, Amy been out there, she's seen it, so let's talk about that, you know? That's what I was talking about in the newspaper, that's the article, I would say, I said in the newspaper in the past, they don't take care of it, we had bad contractors, so I use that for something, now rebuttal back me on that. So, I gotta do rebuttal back and tell me how you gonna fix it, or we need to find a way to fix it. Okay? That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a nutshell, for those watching, we were informed in the pre-council that there was more owed on the house than the value of the house, and according to the program, they were not going to be able to help her. We understood that. I really believe that individuals had harped on that, took Mr. Glenn's comments the wrong way. What he is saying, he's not saying every contractor for the city of Lima is a bad contractor, that was so, would nothing get done.
Right.
But we have had individuals that didn't do or follow up with what they were supposed to do. I could say, without a shadow of a doubt, Ms. Clark's home is still messed up, she has continued to talk to me about it, I have spoken to the individuals that I felt needed to know about it, she has came to council and spoke on it, and it still isn't rectified. And I think, instead of dwelling on something that we know we cannot fix, we understand that life expects us to see other roof. This is just one, and she's one that's speaking up. What about those that haven't spoken up? Maybe there's 99% that had a great job done, but when we have one that's faulty and that's messed up, I believe that we should look into it a little bit further and be cautious towards those individuals that receive bids in the future. And Mr. Glenn has asked twice this evening, you know, even with the pictures, can you at least go and inspect and check it out for yourself? And we moved forward, and we know, all of us up here know, you know, Derrick got a big heart, and I believe he's serious about what he does, maybe sometimes things don't come across the way we feel they should come across, but I believe that his heart is in the right place, and he's trying to do the right thing. And again, he is asking us, you know, this individual came to us in a timely fashion and asked us, could we come out and look? And I know that there was a couple counselors that went out and looked at it for themselves. So, that's all I got to say on that this evening. I really don't want to dwell on where it comes to the battle match, but at the end of the day, if there is something wrong, I urge people to kind of speak up, don't wait 10, 15 years down the line, but Ms. Clark did not do that. She came to us right away, and I think we should do our best to try to rectify that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion? Mr. President. McLean.
If I may recommend something, I would like to see Mrs. Clark give Howard and Amy her address and phone number to contact, and please go out and see what's going on with this, and maybe give us something back so that we all know, so that we can stop asking all these questions. That's all I would ask. I don't know if Howard has her name and her phone number, and have you looked at it?
Mr. President. Mr. Elstro.
I have no idea who Mrs. Clark is or what her situation is. If she provides her address either through me or through council's clerk, I'll make sure that Amy Odom receives it. I'm guessing this has some kind of connection to do with a home improvement grant or loan. My comments, Mr. Glenn, were strictly keen off of your comments in the newspaper, that there is something wrong with the city administration and/or its contractors, and that's a pretty broad brush, and I take offense with that.
I take offense to a lot of things.
We will certainly follow up with Ms. Clark. If she gets us her information, I'll make sure Ms. Odom gets that investigated. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neighbors.
I hate to belabor the point, but now I'm getting confused. What was the nature of the work on Mrs. Clark's home?
Excuse me?
Basement.
Basement.
So, there was work to the foundation? That's not required of a, we don't require permits on that sort of activity?
Yes, we do.
So, there would be record of an inspection on that?
One...
Okay, so it should be clearly evident.
How was that there?
I mean, this is, this is why I oppose the program, it's why it got taken, or why when I was on the committee, I asked to take it out. I mean, it does beg the question of city liability when you have, the city pays for the work, and the city inspects the work, and then the work goes bad. Not to mention the fact that apparently we give loans to people who still owe more on their house than it's worth 66 years after they purchased the house.
No, they did.
No, they did.
No, that's a misstatement, Mr. Nieper.
They received two, 85 and 94.
What she's articulating is that when she came back for help, she was declined because the value exceeded, the value was less than the amount owed. They would not compound the problem, that's why it was denied at the last time.
Eight-five, ninety-four.
Look, it's...
There's a rumor around now.
I'll be happy to introduce you to Mrs. Clark after the meeting, if you don't mind. I'd be happy, she can write her name and her address down, and you can, I'm sure she'd be willing to listen to you and go over anything you'd like.
Mr. Luke. No.
Yes, you...
No. We're gonna call for the question. We'll move on to this. Ms. Clark, your issues will be dealt with by Howard Elstro. Give you, give him your contact information, and he will see that Amy Odom handles it, okay? It is an administrative issue to resolve, okay? So, Howard will get your information. The motion on the floor is to receive and file communication number six. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to execute an LPA agreement with ODOT.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neighbors.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number seven.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Communication number eight.
From the Attorney General regarding new... ...................................................................................................
Mr. President. Mr. McLean. I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Second. The motion second is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
Mr. President.
Neber.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed. Authorize the authorized direction of necessary legislation.
Second. Motion the second is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. Our petition, report officials, Mr. Tom Mazur, and Ms. McLaurin. Veronica McLaurin. Regarding for how...
Good evening. I'm Veronica McLaurin. And Veronica, you are not in deja vu. I'm back again. I'm here to talk to you, give you some updates on our fair housing program over the year 2012. Overall, we received 357 calls in 2012. Four of those calls were forwarded to the Dayton, Ohio Department of Rights and Commission. That number is small, and that means we need to just continue to educate individuals on their rights and responsibilities. And they are covered as a protected class of citizens. The fair housing law says it's illegal to discriminate against a person because of their race, gender, national origin, sex, handicap status, or religion. So, we are educating the community and informing individuals of that. The largest portion of calls that we receive are still with those that are under handicap. And even though it's a smaller number, those with disability or handicap and familial status. Then again, the 99% of the calls that aren't before that called in, those are tenant landlord calls. And what we've done is we've partnered with the Regional Planning Commission in the city of Lima, and we developed a booklet, a checklist. And this is an awesome checklist that informs individuals how to go through a home and check it before they move in. Because the largest portion of calls that we receive are those with repair issues. And most of these tenants are on month-to-month leases. And so, once you're in this situation, you're kind of stuck. You do have the right to contact city code enforcement. You do refer them out to legal aid and other services in the community. But the booklet is definitely a preventative resource opposed to intervention. And it's preventative because it's got information on bedbugs, how to check your home for lead poisoning, for lead in the home, and then other different tips that you can go through and check off. This booklet helps a lot of individuals, and we're taking it out in the community while we're doing our presentations like tonight. And we're informing individuals that they have their rights as tenants and responsibilities as well as landlords. Tom Mazur, I do believe, was going to talk to you about the community assessment tool that we are developing also. I don't know that he is here, so hopefully he will be able to update you all if you have questions about this tool. I do believe it's something that's going to be posted on the city website. We partnered with Regional Planning and the city of Lima to develop this tool also. Awesome assessment of impediments to fair housing choice in the community. It's also a tool that can be used for writing grants. Any organization can use this tool. So, the information will be posted on the city's website. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one question to answer. Before we get this to Ohio civil rights, how far do we go down? How much investigation do you guys do before you get to Ohio civil rights?
We make phone calls to the landlord. We send out testers in the community, so they'll test those properties to see if there is, in fact, discrimination there.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports of committees. Counsel, the whole committee report. This was submitted in writing to all members of council. I move that the committee report be received, filed, and approved. Second. Motion second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 215-13.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 215-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion second is to pass ordinance 215-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neber.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppen.
Yes.
Ordinance 215-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 216-13.
Amending 2013 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppen.
I move that ordinance 216-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion the second is to pass ordinance 216-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neber.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppen.
Yes.
Ordinance 216-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 217-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Adman Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Teppen.
I move that ordinance 217-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion the second is to pass ordinance 217-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
Could someone from administration tell us how much this is going to cost the city for three years span? Will this be the same as it was last year?
Mr. President. Cartels.
This contract is the same, you're correct, Mr. Lowe, as the one we had three years ago. We pay them only what they bring in in contribution and add revenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cartos. Mr. Claves.
I'll just follow up and say that it hasn't cost any out-of-pocket money for the first three-year period of the contract. So, there hasn't been any expense to the city up to this point.
Is there projection? Is there projection of what it meant?
Well, it... The... It's a performance-based contract. If they get contributions to run the station above a certain level, the city will take back a percentage of those contributions. They haven't reached that level yet for their cost of running the station.
All right. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neber.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Teppen.
Yes.
Ordinance 217-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 218-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to option two vehicles.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 218-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion the second is to pass ordinance 218-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neber.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppen.
Yes.
Ordinance 218-13 has been handled, or has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 219-13.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Capital Recovery Services, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 219-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion the second is to pass ordinance 219-13 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Ms. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Neber.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
And Mr. Teppen.
Yes.
Ordinance 219-13 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Mr. Laney is business. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things this evening. Midway East Neighborhood Association will be meeting this Thursday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM at 727 East Kibbe Street. And the only other thing I have this evening is just to wish everyone Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Yes, got a couple of things here. First of all, let's keep Mr. Powell family in prayer. Mr. Powell's been a long-term trailblazer in our community. He was a member of Mark McKing, Dr. Mark McKing Neighborhood Association, a great friend of Mr. Horton. And we lost a dear friend there, and he was great in our community. He did a lot of good things in our community. He'd be well missed. And I know he should have, on his funeral and everything, would be in the newspaper there. Also, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. We've been doing our tour on about education. And I will be meeting the teachers this week and asking them what we need to do to work with our kids at our school and to get our grade back up. You know, and I see now they're doing things that improve a lot right now. But we will be meeting at Independence. And I don't know what day I got to get with the superintendent. It'll be this week, though. But we had met with another group of parents, and they gave out some great ideas. And I appreciate... I don't know the guy's name, but he came out to the meeting, and he brought up ROTC. And he said he'd be looking tonight and give me a call on that, because I know we want to look into that, too. But he was talking about different things, that they can work with the kids, get them involved, and with different things. I know today they are having a youth summit today at Bradford Center tonight. Matter of fact, it's going the same time we're going now, because they're looking at some ways. How could they work with the youth? Could we work on finding jobs for them? What can we do to help them keep themselves busy and do different things in our community? Also, I want to thank Mr. Davis for helping out. Ms. Taylor the other day, thank you so much. He had a problem. She had a problem with her pound sign coming off her home. He came out and took care of that. Appreciate that. That's great. And I'm so glad. We're blessed. We got good folks in our community. Great folks in our community. And I appreciate the kind words that Mr. Lowe, Mr. Teppen all said. But my wording, and no respect to Mr. Lowe, I said that. Okay? And I don't want to take nothing away from the program. I know a lot of folks in my ward use the program. Use the program. The sixth ward, they use the program. And it's a great program. But I think that we sit down and work together, figure out what we're going to do instead of trying to argue and make each one look bad and look good. But it won't bother me at all what we say, because I will continue working and helping everybody out in our city, in our county. And we'll do the best I can to continue helping when people's in the need. Because you never know, one day it might be you. And I got one more thing. Mr. Derby Shine, and I commend him, and I told him I'd bring his name up at city council. This young man gave back $1,000. A lady dropped $1,000 at the bank. He walked up, packed money. He gave it back to her. And this guy don't even have much. Matter of fact, he lived at the homeless shelter. But I want to commend him for that. She dropped it at our purse. He walked over to her, and I'm watching him do it. $1,000. And I think we got people like that. And I thank you so much, though. And I got to talk to him before I came to city council. And, I mean, that just tickled me to death. It made me feel so good that we got good folks. Also, we got a lot of people who have different places to eat at, you know. No one should go hungry this Thanksgiving. No one should go hungry every day. We should be able to feed everyone as we can. But make sure you go. Pastor Hughes have a place at his church there on Kibbe Street. He gonna be feeding people. Also, Jerry Lewis can be feeding people. And he gonna be giving out clothes. So, we appreciate having everyone get out there and help someone out. And the good thing that came out of this tonight, and I appreciate it so much, Ms. Clark gonna get some help. And that's what, no matter what was said about me, whatever, but Ms. Clark got some help, and Ms. Spaulding got some help. So, we helping people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanting to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Neber.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McLean. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items. Again, Thanksgiving is a day of the month that we should give thanks every day, especially to our veterans that fought for us and fought for our freedom. And to remember that, you know, things like the storms that came through Lima and the vicinities yesterday could have been a lot worse.
Yes, it could have.
There's a lot of people out there that don't have electricity even today, and probably some of them are out of their houses because of the damage. So, just remember being a good neighbor to your neighbors and take care of each other. And remember, random acts of kindness are... Certainly does a whole lot for your ego, your self-esteem. To do that and to see the person when you drive away and they pull up to the window at McDonald's or something, and you know you've paid their bill, it's catching on. It's something that a lot of people are doing in today's world, and it's something that I wish more of it was happening. So, let's give thanks that we're here. Give thanks for our neighborhood and have a happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of piggybacking off of Mr. McLean, I'd like for us to, if you can, sometime tonight before you lay your head down, say a prayer for those individuals that got really hit hard last night, especially in the Cloverdale area. I want to say something I don't think has ever been said. I don't know, not since I've been here. I want to say hats off to Mr. Brian and Mr. Kyle Adams and Julian and the new lady. They stayed... Them jokers talked for two hours. They did a great job. I just want to say hats off to WLIO. They kept everybody informed. They did a very good job. I want to say thank you to the emergency services. A partner of mine has a scanner, and I mean, it was wild. I didn't realize how much was going across those scanners, but last night was wild. And I saw it was fire trucks and policemen. Everybody was running, and everybody came together and worked together. And I just want to say hats off to you guys for doing such a great job. There was electrical problems, and it was getting rectified. It was just really good. The other thing, on a sad note, I'd like to say publicly to the family of the Brown family. I lost a good friend this weekend, Mr. Craig Brown. He did a lot of things in the community unsaid. He was a good man. He's a fellow percussionist. I got to play with him. Last time I seen him, he was singing. He was so happy. He had a very, very enjoyable night, but dear friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Teppen.
Mr. President. That coverage on the television station, what is amazing with today's technology
Right.
is how accurate it is and down to the minute. I mean, when they said those winds were going to hit, those winds hit.
They hit, too.
And my wife and I were watching because we had a daughter who was traveling. And I actually was, you know, I mean, we can look at different apps, but seeing what we saw live on WLIO was very, very helpful, and I know the community appreciated it. There is an item I would like to move to refer the issue of replacement personnel in the auditor's office relative to the budget to the Finance Committee.
Second.
The issue is replacement personnel for the auditor's office.
The motion the second is to refer the issue of replacement personnel for the auditor's office to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And on a sad note, we lost a great member of the fourth ward, Larry Skelly, who was the vice president of the Boulevard Neighborhood Association. He passed away. And I would make a motion that we authorize a resolution memorializing Larry and his efforts to help our community.
Second.
The motion the second is to authorize a resolution memorializing Larry Kelly for his
Skelly.
for his contributions to the community. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
And lastly, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and please be thankful for everything that we have individually and in particular, our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teppen. I'd like to make one referral. I'd like to refer the issue of a review of the ordinance on projectiles fired in the city. And the name of the term was soft. Airsoft? Okay. And its consideration for exemption. I'd like to refer that discussion to the Safety Services Committee.
Second.
The motion the second is... We'll dispense with discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. I would like to congratulate Mr. Lowe and Ms. Adams on their reelection, even though it hasn't been certified yet. What is it, the 26th that it gets certified, I believe? And also, congratulations to Mr. Gordon and Ms. Ann Miles.